To sit where you're comfortable. We can appreciate everyone coming out tonight to our meeting. I've always said that this is the best place to be, particularly at the sunset here, at this height here in Long Beach. And I look forward to the city council meeting during the summer and during the spring. And again, you know, I just want to remind everyone that we have good welfare at the end of this meeting. The rule is, and has been, and will probably continue to be, that if you want to speak or say something during good welfare, you must sign up now before the city council meeting ends. It's part of the rule. We appreciate everyone adhering to that. And again, like I've mentioned over and over again, we have a three-minute limit on what you have to say. We do want to hear what you have to say. And as you know, legislation that we do here, laws, they're based on what you say. And this is why I so frequently hear during good welfare, what you have to say. So again, I'm going to ask everyone again, that during our meetings, we ask that we keep the kind of decorum that we expect during a government meeting. That means, folks, that we don't cross-talk with anyone, that we don't fool people, we don't make people feel bad for what they say, because this is why we have local government like we have. So again, in decorum, the three-minute limit, and then we need you folks to remember that you have to sign up during good welfare before the city council meeting is over. And again, I want to welcome everyone. One of the things that I am very happy to be home, I have been taking care of my dad in Puerto Rico, and he just turned 100. And I'd be excited. He was very funny, because he was a, and I have to say this, because I'm very proud of him, he was an agricultural worker for the Seccar Get family in Puerto Rico, which was the people who made Don Hugue rum. And this was when he was very young, he was at Sheraton, and they wanted to do a special to interview him on TV. I was totally opposed to that, because I don't like that kind of marketing with my father for rum. So with that, folks, I think one of the interesting things that's happening today is that as we have an aging population, the responsibility on us, the boomers and wealth is pretty heavy. And I appreciate it every day that I have my father with us. And with that, folks, I'm going to adjourn our meeting over to Mr. Fraser. I think that we also have a very special thing that's going to happen. And it is a presentation. And one of the things that I really enjoy doing is asking folks to be a part of what we do here. One of the things that we enjoy is bringing our religious organizations in town to be a part of what we do here, because we have, you know, it's become part of the culture of Long Beach. We have a new rabbi in Temple Emmanuel, and that's Rabbi Zanahak. Is that the correct pronunciation of this dominant founder? Is that correct? Okay. And with that, we have a very special presentation by the children. And I'm not going to say anymore. And I'm going to ask for, let me begin. Please sit forward.
Hi, guys. Everybody stand up and go to the front. I just want to introduce the religious representation of the Religious School children at Temple Emmanuel. They have a little bit too, a little hesitation about the Holocaust Remembrance Day, which was last week, as well as Israeli Independence Day, which is actually today. And without further ado, I will get it over to the children.
Last week, in honor of Yom HaShulah, Holocaust Remembrance Day, we lit six memorial candles to acknowledge the six million innocent lives lost during one of the darkest and saddest times in Jewish history. It is important that we remember those victims and ensure that such a tragedy never happens against the Jewish people, or to any Jewish people.
We have heard from Holocaust survivors who had suffered unspeakable torture and witnessed horrible crimes against humanity. Their incredible stories of survival brought us to tears, but surprisingly, these survivors did not speak of hate and anger, but rather of hope and perseverance. They take pride in continuing and speaking with the younger generation of Jews, who prove that the Jewish nation is destined to survive in glory.
We would like to share our poem entitled "The Creed of a Holocaust Survivor," written by Alexander Kimbler. I do believe with all my heart in the natural goodness of men, despite the destruction brought by women who try to be God, in goodness of men I do believe.
I do believe with all my heart that God gave man the blessing and the curse. Man can tolerate the curse of envy, hatred, and prejudice, or the blessing of love, harmony, and beauty.
I do believe with all my heart that God created a beautiful world, the sun and the trees, the flowers, and the bees. And the best way to serve God is to enjoy the fruits of His labor and work.
Despite the painful memories from the past, in the joyful celebration of life, I do believe, in the love and compassion of the Creator, I do believe.
I believe with all my heart in a better world, when all the creatures of hate will be sung, and man will become his brother's keeper.
When man will stop killing men in the name of God, and nations will not lift weapons against nations, when it will be, I do not know, but despite how science can contradict, in the dawn of a better world, I do believe.
Today, we turn from sadness to joy, as we celebrate Yom HaAsma'ud, Israel's Independence Day. After the Holocaust and World War II, the Jewish people were scattered across the world. In 1947, the United Nations voted and agreed to help to establish the modern state of Israel.
On May 14th, 1948, Israel became an independent state. Jews who were dispersed for so long returned to their ancient homelands. For American Jews, celebrating Yom HaAsma'ud is a way to express solidarity with the state of Israel.
Thank you for inviting us here today, representing the Temple Emmanuel Religious School, to express the significance and importance of Yom HaShulah and Yom HaAsma'ud.
We feel fortunate to live in the diverse city of Long Beach, where different cultures and religions are recognized and celebrated.
However, as the number of Holocaust survivors diminishes, our generation is responsible for continuing to educate others about the hatred and the tolerance that led to this massive, massive genocide.
We hope not to only the Holocaust Remembrance Day, an act of remembrance, but also a remembrance act.
If I can, as we say, Yom HaShulah, that was really wonderful, really special. Thank you for coming. I just want to thank everybody, Jack, as well as the Religious Director of Nilo Pascuco, for all of your hard work in putting this together. And I want to thank all of the students. It was really a wonderful presentation. As you know, last week, the city commemorated Holocaust Memorial Day with a number of events throughout the city, one of which was at Temple Emmanuel, which was really special and very gripping. And I think that as we celebrate Yom HaAsma'ud today, throughout the Jewish community, I think it's important that we're here to acknowledge it as well. Also, I want to thank the parents who brought their students here and who have dedicated the time to their religious education. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. And I've always said that it takes a tremendous amount of courage to come up and speak into a mic and, you know, use a mic if we're talking at a city council meeting. And I want to commend the folks that prepared these children. Also, too, I want to commend those of you that are here in the audience. I see so many familiar faces. And it's a wonderful feeling to know that people do come out to these kinds of meetings. And again, just a reminder to everyone that we may not be able to answer all of the questions you may have, for whatever reason. There may be a legal reason, or maybe that we just don't know, we don't have an answer. But we do believe you have a right to ask. And with that, folks, we're going to begin our meeting, and I'll ask Mr. Fraser to start our meeting. Fraser?
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, May 6th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. On the roll call, Captain Reddick. Councilmember Van Deen.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Aron.
Here.
President Torres.
Here.
At the record, the presence of City Manager Jack Schirr, Corporation Council Reverend Agostese, and Controller Kristi Hansen-Hightower. And now, the salute is clear.
Mr. Moore, would you lead us tonight in pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, our own nation, under God, in this world for liberty and justice for all.
I think we're going to begin with our city manager's update. Sure. Thank you, everyone who joined us for the city's Earth Day celebration in Kennedy Plaza. As we sure you know, this event also signifies the start of the city's carryout bag ordinance. Detailed FAQ regarding the ordinance is available at longbeachny.gov/bags. We'd also like to thank the hundreds who joined us this past weekend for the People's Climate Margin Superblock. As a bag or island, we know climate change is a tier-one homeland security issue, but we need partners at every level of government to commit to protecting us from severe weather. We'd like to invite everyone that made it to Bike Month, and we'd like to thank everyone who answered the bicycle survey, which ended over the weekend. We received 1,168 responses in both English and Spanish, from both online and in the field. The purpose of this questionnaire was to gather information from Long Beach residents about the current conditions and future needs of bicycle owners in the city. The city has learned that iStar Financial, owners and developers of the super block, will subsequently submit a third and final application for tax payments to the Nassau County IDA, which has the exclusive authority to grant or deny the application. It is unclear whether the IDA needs to hold a public meeting connection with this new application. Therefore, the city feels it is imperative that the residents be provided with the details of the application and an analysis of its short-term and long-range effects on the city. The meeting, to take place in this room next Tuesday at 6:30 PM, will be led by a special counsel and the city controller. Public will have the opportunity to submit questions following a brief presentation. Coming up on the weekend of Saturday, June 10th, LGBT Network is producing the Long Island Pride on the Beach in partnership with City of Long Beach, with support from statewide market New York grant, the I Love New York grant, Bethpage Federal Credit Union, TD Bank, Arizona IST, Northwell House, Nassau Community Hospital, Nissan, and others. Detailed FAQ is posted on the city's website and will be mailed to every household in the city in the coming days. As a reminder, costs for the event is covered by the LGBT Network and their sponsors. And finally, we'd like to let everyone know that the 2017 Beach Passes will be going on sale this Saturday, May 6th. All of our beaches will be open this summer. We're looking forward to a wonderful season. Starting this Saturday, Beach Passes can be purchased seven days a week at the gazebo building located across from Long Beach Ice Garden. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 6:00, and weekends, 9:00 to 4:00 until June 25th. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/Beach. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schirr. With that, we're going to begin our meeting. Mr. Fraser?
First items, a public hearing for the purpose of giving citizens adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Okay, I got a brief presentation on the operating budget.
I lost my dog, my husband, a vet. What am I doing wrong? He ain't talking. I ain't doing nothing wrong. Y'all is poking up my baby. I lost my son, and I'm army vet. And he took my dog away and gave himself a raise. I don't care. Y'all interrupting my life. I'm a homeless guy. And you let this man right here give himself a raise, and I'm an army vet. Why don't I have my dog back?
As I said, I want to talk to you.
All right, all right.
I'm gonna sit down. We can talk, bro. Okay, I will. But if you talk to me...
I wanted to call five years ago, I couldn't talk to nobody. Okay, better, you and you ain't got business. My dog and my son, man, we got kids.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to please control yourself here.
Maybe you don't come in the neighborhood asking nobody to vote for you no more.
No, you don't have a vote, man. I'm gonna ask you to please control yourself here. Thank you. Sir, if you cannot control yourself, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
I'm worried about you knowing this city of Long Beach.
Sir, we're going to ask you to leave or let you get rid of yourself.
But what you did to me, Jack, was wrong, man. You see yesterday, every night, I don't see my baby.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Don't worry about this city.
Okay, we're going to begin the presentation.
Cool, I've been doing it up here five years, and I'm a homeless vet. I'm homeless and army vet. Now I can't speak. Now nobody talk to me.
Okay, this is our sixth annual budget presentation.
That's wrong. That's wrong. I lost my son, I lost everything, and he gave himself a raise, and I'm an army vet. You should have told me. You didn't believe me, no. What you did to me, man. Homeless, I'm tired of seeing you in a rag and roaches. And it's all because of you, Jack, baby dog of mine.
We wish everyone a very good year in Long Beach.
Okay. Starting with the city's annual budget. This is, for those who are not familiar with the city's operating budget, this is our sixth time as administration delivering a presentation on the city's operating budget. We have much to update you on this year. The annual operating process begins in January, and a lot of preparation goes into this document. I would like to begin by thanking our budget team, Kristi Hansen-Hightower, our city controller, who does a terrific job apparently, Shari Jains, who is a huge part of this as well. We appreciate it from the entire budget team. We don't have a huge budget team, but they do a lot of good work together. So, a word as we begin here about the actual budget document. The budget policy tool and the framework through which we allocate the resources to power the city's recovery. This is a comprehensive budget document with an improved narrative. I would begin by saying that this administration is the first administration in the history of the city of Long Beach to actually offer a budget narrative, a description in a detailed fashion of where our financial finances are, and what's going on with them, and walk everybody through. I was pleased to find, actually recently, that a professor at Stony Brook University, including the public policy program, uses Long Beach's budget as a model of local municipal governance on Long Island, and that is, it's nice for us to hear, especially from where we started this process. So we have expanded year by year the process by which we lay this out to the public. Several years ago, we added for the first time a city mission statement. It's now been revised a bit, and goals. The city's mission statement, which reads, "City of Long Beach, through the city council, city manager, and city employees, will deliver municipal services to its residents in a fiscally responsible, efficient, responsive, and friendly manner." So this year's theme is powering a smart recovery, right? We've now entering our, we're in our fifth year of recovery from Superstorm Sandy, and our sixth year of recovery from the fiscal crisis that we inherited. The following couple pages lay out our priorities that we discuss in terms of recovery, and provide throughout the budget document key-coded symbols to lead us along the way, so we can take a look at each issue as they come. And these also follow suit in our performance management program, Long Beach Dad. So the first priority, as you can imagine, is managing our fiscal and physical recovery, right? Simply put, taking the financial recovery that we began in 2012 and merging it with the physical recovery from Superstorm Sandy. I won't get into the entire story of where we've been, a very brief reminder, as we declared fiscal crisis after facing near bankruptcy a little over five, five and a half years ago, and brought in a series of reforms that ultimately has now led to the city restoring the rainy day fund. I think two years ago, in this hearing, I was proud to report that the city is back in black. We now have a $24.2 million turnaround in our fund balance. This year, currently looking at a fund balance of approximately $9.4 million, which we are judiciously using to pay for the previous administration's deficit, which is something I'll get into a little later. We have obviously had nine consecutive positive credit actions by Moody's Investor Service, including credit rating upgrade, and we see our New York State Fiscal Stress Score improve dramatically from a worst-in-state status five years ago. Looking forward, we have to continue implementing our long-term fiscal policy, right? Protecting our fund balance and a variety of things. The city council adopted a long-term financial plan in 2013 with six tenets. Number one, structurally sound balanced budgeting. Number two, diversifying and increasing revenue. Number three, right sizing the workforce. Number four, management accountability and efficiency. Number five, instituting and enhancing internal financial control. And that leads us to number six, stabilization of taxes, which we'll discuss in a few moments. A brief quote from Moody's, "Management has implemented various cost controls, revenue enhancements, and other policies." They have praised us as we have made strides at the city, and as I'll speak to in a moment, we certainly have more work to do, but we've made great progress so far. So here's where we're at. Last year, you may recall, we showed an earlier versions of this slide with the stages of financial recovery, which we borrow from the Government Finance Officers Association as a template that they use. We began, as you can see, five and a half years ago, in decline and distress, right? We're on the verge of bankruptcy, and we did all the things that we just discussed. And take a look where we are now. We are in recovery. We are certainly not yet on the other side of the recovery. We have more work to do to continue to implement our fiscal recovery plan, so that we can ultimately get to a point of financial sustainability and real fiscal health. You see, this year, at this point, the fiscal recovery has generated $7.2 million by doing work in-house, and an additional $2 million in savings through right sizing of the workforce. Moving on to the meat and potatoes of managing our fiscal and physical recovery, the physical piece is what we see every day, right? We've brought in unparalleled resources and assistance to the city after the storm. We've rebuilt our boardwalk. We have all the things, the infrastructure that we're doing. $4 million for the city's water system, $5.5 to upgrade the sewer system, $1.4 million invested in upgrading the city's storm drainage infrastructure. Obviously, looking forward, we know we have to complete the Army for Engineers project, the approximately $40 million in additional projects we see along the Bay Side of the city, and establish an office of emergency management. It would, the right thing to do at this moment is to pause and give a very big thank you to the CSCE workforce, who's helped us every step of the way, is a true partner in labor. Not only have we done our projects in-house, which has kept money in the pockets of local Long Beach residents, but we, by doing so, have reimbursed those projects, not just overtime, but straight time. We have generated $7.2 million to date to help towards our rainy day fund. When we say a smart recovery, that's what we mean. Really thinking through what we're doing and merging two recoveries together to maximize the value of the taxpayer. So again, thank you, CSCE. Public safety, obviously, is a priority for the city. We've restructured the police department. We've done intelligence-led policing. Crime is down. We see improved traffic safety. We've restructured the fire department. Looking forward, we have to continue expanding our community policing issues initiatives. We are implementing this year a license plate reader system to keep Long Beach residents even safer, and continue implementing the ICMA report, as well as new initiatives to enhance the protection of the houses of worship. I think the city council's gotten very involved in. From a quality of life perspective, obviously, you know, providing a diverse, inclusive, and welcoming atmosphere to live, work, and raise our families is the priority. We see enhanced recreational activities, including rebuilding all of the playgrounds at this point in the city, and ensuring that parks and beaches are smoke-free. We see improved efforts towards beautification and transportation, and expansion of our community development issues, initiative, I should say, including the establishment of an arts council, and an expanded community development program, including ADA accessibility. And looking forward, we see, we still have plenty of work to do there as well. We have parking solutions that we need to develop and implement. We have workforce development opportunities, and continued enhancement of our programs and services, including substance abuse counseling. From an economic development perspective, I would start by mentioning that prior to Superstorm Sandy, the city did not have an economic development effort or a planning effort going on. So the priority is on working the tax base to alleviate the burden on Long Beach taxpayers, which is something that we have seen move forward as far as our economic indicators. We've established, obviously, an economic development department that's done a phenomenal job, leveraged themselves more than three, sorry, $4.3 million in grants, 5.8 times the grant that they originally joined us with. And they've done a marketing campaign and brought in a lot of money to the city, and that's appreciated. Overall, we've seen now the improvement in the economic climate in the city, including real estate values, sales tax revenues, and a drop in unemployment rates. And we have a downtown street skating pilot as well. Small business assistance has been a priority, not only small business mentoring, but MWBD programs as well. And looking forward, we have plenty of work to do to finish off the draft comprehensive plan, update the zoning code ultimately with community input, and make provisions to maintain the character of our community and prevent overdevelopment. And we need to continue to support our local businesses through marketing campaigns and working with our Chamber of Commerce. In terms of sustainability, the, obviously, we put a priority on protecting the city's natural resources and water quality, increasing resilient infrastructure. And so we're protecting our environment. We've saved money and saved resources with Sable Stream Recycling. We've passed Nassau County's first carryout bag ordinance. We're doing clean energy programs, which are not just environmentally friendly, but save tax carry dollars, and putting a priority on our water quality. Going forward, some of our next steps include these sustainability projects that we earned for $800,000 in Clean Energy Communities Grant, and tracking energy uses of usage of our municipal buildings, as well as fighting to protect the Lloyd Oxytocin, which is periodically under threat. And finally, from a smart government perspective, the bottom line is to govern responsibly and protect our resources. So we've improved communications, enhanced our policy action, and increased transparency. Back in Long Beach, recently, starved within the top of Long Island municipalities. Back in Long Beach, recently starred within the Tops Long Island Municipalities for transparency. And we have reorganized our departments and we need to continue to do so and continue to make sound financial budget and performance metrics part of our management approach. So all of that are the priorities we see reflected and funded in our operating budget, right? The operating budget is the policy tool for which we fund the priorities that we just spoke about. So to dive into the meat and potatoes of numbers, we start with the overall operating budget for this year is basically $93.5 million. You see how it comes down between the general fund, which is 87% of the budget, the water fund and the super fund, which are smaller pieces of the pie. We begin, as we begin every year, with enormous fiscal challenges, not just because of where we started as a municipality in fiscal distress several years ago, but because all municipalities are facing some of the same key issues, right? We have rising fixed costs that we have to grapple with before we even look at what's going on in our operating budget. So this year, we see healthcare going up over $1 million. We have contractual salaries. We have retirement pension costs. We have debt service to grapple with. So we are certainly not the only municipality looking at all these issues. They are a challenge for us because we're not only grappling with them, but we're attempting to continue our combat. So we're swimming upstream, so to speak. So here's some of the smart choices that we're making this year to power our recovery. Number one, this is a cost-to-continue budget, which means this budget simply reflects the cost to continue services here in the city, reflecting no significant service cuts and no significant service expansion. Our budget team's gone through the budget line by line. We've reduced these expenditures by two, over $2 million. As I mentioned earlier, we've merged our fiscal and physical recoveries. This proposed budget includes a transfer of over $1 million from the FEMA fund to the general fund for that effort. Recovery, as I mentioned, has generated $7.2 million to date for our rainy day fund. It's been used to offset the cost of operations and reduce the burdens on Long Beach taxpayers. Again, a thank you to the CSEA. We have recently announced an eight-year agreement with our largest bargaining unit, providing stability in the city's largest cost structure. This year, we'll see over $400,000 in cost savings from the new contract. And we'll see $29,000 in savings from contributions to healthcare from new employees going forward. As a reminder, management contributes to its healthcare and has since 2012. That is approximately $48,000 in savings. In addition, the bond rating upgrades that we have received are giving us $200,000 in savings and lower interest costs. Something to highlight in our organizational realignment is we've done a series of early retirement incentives. So realigning our workforce through attrition. We have reduced the workforce by now 40 full-time positions, resulting in annual cost savings, that's annual cost savings, of more than $2 million. During this calendar year, 13 employees retired from the city's incentive program, with a savings this year of $260,000. We've also looked for diverse revenues outside the bounds of just taxes, obviously. We see grant funding from various agencies coming in this year at approximately $2.3 million. And one of the things that I would highlight is because we have generated a rainy day fund, again, this year, we are recommending appropriating $637,000 from the general fund and $85,000 from the water fund, which will cover the annual debt service associated with the financing, with the deficit financing the city did several years back. So simply put, this administration's surplus is paying for the previous administration's deficits. And finally, all of that allows the city this year to stay within the tax cap, which is 1.26%. By way of background, there is a 2% tax cap that we all refer to globally. But just because it's a 2% tax cap doesn't mean that it is a 2% tax cap. It is calculated at the rate of inflation. And there's a whole bunch of fun calculations, which we don't get 2%, we get 1.26% this year. You may remember last year, we got 0.12%. And in conclusion now, just as a reminder, city taxes comprise approximately 35% of our tax bill. The 1.26% that I spoke of a moment ago equates to approximately $56 per household. And just an interesting thing at the end here, it's always helpful to see where the money goes. Approximately 25, a little over 25% to employee benefits, a little over 20% to public safety, and so on, as our biggest pieces, and so on down the line. And finally, just a thank you again to our budget team for doing a terrific job in not just preparing the budget, preparing and improving budget that improves every year, but continuing to scour for savings, as well as managing the budget over the course of the year. And we have produced very, very tight budgets in the last couple of years in order to reduce the burden of taxpayer. And we are doing so again, and I thank the budget team for all their hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. You know, the budget period is a very difficult time for all of us here because we need to look at what we've been doing, what we need to do, and what we can't do. And I think that this year, we're seeing again that with the degrees that we've been receiving, that we're on the right path. And that's a wonderful thing about that. I don't know, is there any comments from the council on this presentation?
I just have a great point.
Here, go ahead.
Mr. Sherman, I think you did a wonderful job keeping us within the tax cap of 1.26, but I noticed that there was potential increase in the water and sewer fund. Better? Okay. See, there's a potential increase in the water and sewer fund by 2%. Can that be looked into consequently to affect them?
That is something that we will take a look at. We've done a lot of work to balance those funds over the last couple of years, and they are looking much better now. So we will take a look and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yes, a lot of problems on that. Are the water and sewer fund paying for themselves now? I know we were always at what you wanted for the general fund to cover them. Are they covering themselves now?
Yes, they are, although the controllers keep coming.
And just to compare to this one, the sewer fund and the water fund, turns out that it takes a lot more money to handle the city sewer waste because of the lack of water. So those expenses here over the year are outpacing the cost of the water. So the last year, we did have a subsidy from general fund in order to balance sewer fund. This year is the first year we've been able to really make a change. We have been lowering it year after year, and this year it's still just not. Or with the proposed budget here for you.
I think it would be important to look at the exact amount, the 2% that actually lead to for those that you're talking about, not just the 2%. I recall.
I think they can hear you.
Okay. I said, I think it would be better to convert it from a percentage into the actual amount so that residents understand the impact on their actual.
So annually, in the water fund, that equates to about $26 per year for the average household. For the sewer fund, it equates to about $6 per year for the average household.
Are there any other comments from the council? I do have one question from Ms. Hyder. And that is, I noticed that the debt service, a little over a million, is that the correct number, or am I looking at it incorrectly?
That's correct.
Okay, so have we had an increase in our debt service?
Well, that's an increase.
It is an increase. Okay, very good.
That relates to capital, you know, we've done the present capital plan from the last three years, to the preparation phase and the balance of the sewer fund that comes on this year.
Okay, and the deficit financing that we have, does that include that?
Well, there's no increase from that because we do have a level of debt service. So that amount stays the same every year. So it's not part of the increase now. That came on back in 2014 when we actually did the test.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, I'm glad to know that. But, you know, of course, we get very concerned with debt and how we're doing and paying our debt. We kind of think that we are going to move forward on this. This is a, is this a? Okay, so again, we will, okay.
I have, I just have one more question. You talked about the CSEA savings in the presentation chat and the 411 were saving because of the negotiations that occur and the heating contractors and the layoffs caused by the CSEA. And then you mentioned $29,000 for healthcare. Is that per employee or is it just $29,000?
It's approximately $29,000, that's in total. So new employees coming on will contribute 10% of the possible premium to the healthcare.
How many employees is that?
We have budgeted, because with the retirements of new employees coming on, I believe it's upwards of seven people coming on. That was that new question, that's concerning as a whole. Ah, that's what I'm asking.
Right, okay, thank you.
I just have one last question, Ashley. You mentioned that the bond increases and the rate increases directly that we perceive which has increased. What does it impact on our budget? What have the increases in the operating budget or debt?
It's approximately $200,000 in saves. Do you want to elaborate on?
For every upgrade that you get, it can change your cost of capital anywhere from a quarter of a percent to half a percent. So for every quarter of a percent that we save on our average faraway, it saves us between $100 and $20,000 per year. On average, you do, and down, where we get about $20,000 in savings.
Instead of directly in half the debt service.
Absolutely, the higher you're raising, the lower your costs are.
Okay, now I'm going to ask the public if there's any comments. We'll begin here in front of Mr. Trepp. I've started to see you there before. Welcome, Mr. Trepp. Good to see you this evening.
Thank you.
Just need your name for the record.
Good evening, round of all council members and city manager. My name is George Trepp, Vice President of Long Beach Arts Council, which is comprised of nine volunteers and one executive, part-time executive director. In case I leave anything out, I have one of my other council members here, Ms. Sherman. So I will proceed. As you know, the proposed budget, one of the city's goals is to offer a wide variety of quality recreational and cultural programs here in Mac. Towards that end, the city council established the Arts Council in the fall of 2014 with the purpose to encourage artistic awareness and enhance the cultural environment of the city through the promotion of all media of the arts. The Arts Council goal is to promote the arts and education of the arts, increase the display of art in public spaces and promote collaboration amongst various art organizations in the city. Initially, there was no city funding. However, in fiscal year 216 to 217, $18,000 was allocated for a part-time staff person who was primarily charged with securing grant funds for programs, but was also responsible for coordinating and planning and implementing programs. Within this year, the council has accomplished the following with no tax money. Planned and implemented the beach ticket booth making by local and regional artists. Conducted the second annual meet and greet, whose guest speaker is the head of Discover Long Island, and she discussed the promotion of arts and culture as an economic driver within the city. Planned and implemented the jellyfish jamboree at the Yerney Festival. Coordinated mural painting, coordinating, it's going to be at the end of May, coordinating the painting of the bureau at the West School. Arranged for internationally known artists to paint the transportation building, but unfortunately, that's on hold because of a rehab project of that building. Planned a first Friday events calendar, which the council has tacitly approved, but we haven't seen any money yet to implement it. Funding by the Community Development Black Grant Program. The council implemented a series of painting workshops in 225 West Park Avenue, Channel Park Homes and the EMO Center. Once again, these were all accomplished without tax money ones as they were funded by donations, grants and mischievous. With these accomplishments, the council hoped for additional, the addition of program and supply monies from the general fund to enhance our efforts. To that end, the budget would propose the expanded arts program, the latter program that was community development. To that end, we propose the expansion of that program to east and west.
I have to remind you, you're three minutes or off. I know that you're fully.
They've got that much more.
Okay.
Enabling materials and supplies for public space, murals and other projects individually grants to local arts organization and a nominal increase in the part-time hours to facilitate the search for outside funds. Unfortunately, the proposed budget did the contrary, it cut our funds. As a group, the Arts Council is enthusiastic and brimming with ideas. We would hate to see the commitment forwarded by the absence of resources. Consequently, we respectfully request that the city council consider the inclusion of programming funds as requested and a nominal increase in hours for the part-time, especially in the light of the fact that it wasn't this boarder who was part of the economic development team and helped us a lot. We realize the city is confronted with fiscal challenges, but again, we hate to see our efforts, nine volunteers, forwarded by lack of resources.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Trepp. We appreciate you bringing that up to our attention. And this is something we will look into. And again, we appreciate the detail you've given us on that. And I will personally look into that, exactly as you're saying. Do we have any other comments from the public on the budget? Okay, this gentleman right here, welcome. And glad to have folks here making comments on the budget.
Jordan Parkes, 371 West Olive Street. First off, I'd like to say for the great news, Mr. Sherman, this small tax increase is much appreciated. So far, so good, ranges are up 2 to nothing. One question I didn't understand. Are you raising the cost of beach passes this year?
No.
Great, great, great guy, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Parkes, good to see you too. Again, that is very good news, isn't it? When I saw that, I was very happy, I was very happy. There was another comment here, Mr. Bendo. Oh my goodness, good to see you. Welcome, Mr. Bendo. Just need you to state your name for the record.
Good evening, John Bendo. My confidence, by the way, are nicely organized budget. Just a very general comment that I seem to make every year about the debt. Just then, you pointed out, it's still an increasing slope curve. We now spend over 13 cents out of every dollar the city takes in servicing the debt. And it's increasing every year. That's just an unsustainable path. I know we like to talk about the fiscal mess that was inherited. The problem is, you don't want to leave a fiscal mess for those that will follow you in terms of debt. So please just think about that going forward. And then just a specific question. There are a lot of things that, resolutions that are voted on to pay things from each accounts. Each accounts, I believe, are accounts that pay for grant money, but they don't show up in the budget anywhere. How are those each accounts accounted for? Where are they? How are they monitored? How are they, how are those accounts?
Each account are, each accounts are actually the capital projects, which is the next year, and so we add new that we have in here on the capital project. So it's called the capital plan, and then we authorize it on the board capital plan. It's not specific to grants.
Okay, so each is for the capital approval plan, which is not.
Because on like an operating budget, those those available monies don't expire at the end of this year for capital. It's always a project.
So while the council wants on the capital plan to approve it, I guess the budget itself is never.
Well, capital plan aren't in the budget for the capital fund.
Okay, so right. All right, thank you.
Very good question, Mr. Bendo. Thank you.
I would just make a general comment as well. John brings up a good point regarding the city's debt burden. I would just point out, first of all, that our debt burden is incited by Moody's as the manageable debt burden. They applauded us for paying our debt at a rapid rate. Specifically, as we spoke about the debt service coming on this year, we had a couple of significant one-time expenditures, right? One-time costs of the city. We had super block judgment. We had separation pay borrowing. But it is fair to say also, we've done a pretty robust investment in our capital infrastructure, and that's something that we, you know, that obviously have been neglected for a long time. Though as I'll I'll hope I'm not, you know, ruining next next time's discussion, but we'll be proposing a level of capital investment this year that is less less capital, so to speak, than we're paying than we're paying down, sort of to keep with the legal level of debt service, because we will have debt service coming off the city next year. So that, John, that's something that we're we're looking at very closely, and appreciate you bringing it up.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. I think I saw someone else's hand. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item on the budget? Yes, please go forward, sir. It was good to hear from everyone, and welcome, welcome.
Good evening, council members. Mike Laurie, just looking at this budget, I'm very impressed with the level of work that we did to this. Just want to let you know that for sure, it was a lot. I just have one or two questions. It has to do with the draft comprehensive plan. I don't know, since this is a budget, it's not financial, but does the council have any timeframe where they may consider reviewing and adopting it after the 15 years of community involvement? It does affect zoning, I think, as well. And it also explores the feasibility for a parking garage, of which parking, as we all know, is somewhat tight. Personally, outside of this budget, I don't really have any comments other than congratulate you on this this effort of keeping it, and the C S C A as well. Parking garages, parking, shall attract availability for more people to drive. I think it will also enhance the rest of businesses, and I think it's a great source to attract more people outside, I mean, to Long Beach, other than the doorwork and everything else that's there. So I'm my question is, it may not be the scope of this hearing right now, but is there any timeframe to adopt the comprehensive plan effective?
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. You know, it's a question that continues to pop up over and over again, but as a direct bearing to the budget at this point right now, although it eventually will have a bearing on our budget, it really, at this point right now, I'm not sure if we've come up with a timeframe. We thought that presenting the concept of a comprehensive plan was important so we can have community input, and that's exactly what what it's accomplished. But you're absolutely right, Mr. Laurie, there are a lot of questions. Everything impacts this budget, and it's a very good question you're asking. So we'll have to go, we'll have to answer that question as we go along. We don't really have any timeframe right now, but we do want to hear from the community, various components of the community about the comprehensive plan. Are there any other comments on this item? Miss Treppson, good to see you too. Please come forward. I'll hand her the mic.
I just have a quick question regarding how raises determine in the budget. Some people are getting more money than others, or is that a question that can't be answered? It's a personal question.
That's a, Miss Treppson, I don't think that's an inappropriate question. Are you asking, are you asking, what kind of raise? Who are you asking about? We have the simply.
Yeah, I'm asking more on the administration.
I think so.
That's the people that work for.
Right, we're, I missed that comment, but.
That's okay, you can't see me, it's okay.
We're recommending a just over 1% raise for for management employees this year, who continue to contribute in healthcare and C S C A this year, as part of their eight-year contract agreement, has passed up the raise. However, they they are getting steps, step increases, longevity increases, which amount, which averaged to about 3% for for worker.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
Again, thank Sharon, everyone doing a great budget, great budget. The uniforms for the city management department from 50,000 to 100, do you really need to have new vests every year? I can see it, but I don't.
Yeah, I think we get uniforms for 50,000. I'm sure Christie.
Or am I reading it wrong?
In the budget, uniforms are going from 75 to 100,000. So those are not vests up here, those are just actually, you know, the t-shirts and pants that our C S C workers wear every day.
Oh, I, I.
Exactly that.
I put it with, and the city managers, I didn't think it was workers.
No, no, well.
Oh, okay.
In the central administration budget, where the office is in under overseas that budget, that's why that budget is.
Oh, okay, I see. So where are the uniforms for, is that kind of what I did?
We don't, we don't spend enough money on that actually to have this whole line, which is just a general supply line in the purchasing budget.
And also on the 846, I, what is it, even though it's a very small amount, why is there no better service than money anymore?
That money was based on a grant that was that was.
That's not on the Yerney State Department. But.
Okay, thank you, Miss Treppson. Certainly excellent question. Are there any other comments on this item, the first item, for the city budget? Very important comment. Yes, Ms. Alessi. Good to see you. And welcome.
Hi, great job, looks beautiful. Probably understand most of it. Helen Alessi, 800 East Chester. In particular, I'm looking at the community development page, there are no numbers. And I understand that we're not getting much community development grants this year from the county. And I understand the letter has been written to President Trump about HUD reducing numbers and money, and I wonder if we could put together a little group to talk about it and figure out some ways the nonprofit sector in Long Beach is really suffering financially, and we do so, so very much with so very little. So I'm wondering if we can address this in some other way, figure out how some of the nonprofits could work together to get some funding, because there's no numbers here, zero, I understand.
Well, just as a background, there's no numbers here because the community development budget is not within operating budget of the city.
Okay.
It's own special grant fund, and the budget is put on by annually by resolution.
So where would I, where would we fund that?
Well, we do have, I mean, I guess you have to boil it, or I said it was actually done. It's actually done by resolution annually, so you could, we haven't done this year, so you can, you know, flashes would be.
Helen, remember we did the the hearing not too long ago, right? We were expecting something around, I mean, $1,000. But we, I think traditionally around September, the prime call of each year, we get the, we get back from the county.
But there's nothing coming this year.
Well, the president's budget proposed, as you as you pointed out, to zero out the whole program, but that hasn't gone forward yet. We don't know where that stands right now.
Good, thank you.
Although I must say, Ms. Alessi, it is a good suggestion that we sit down with the nonprofits to discuss possible alternatives. Relying on monies coming from the federal government are just diminishing hours. It's it's a very difficult place for us to rely on it. So we are open to ideas.
I would also just encourage encourage residents throughout the city, those who depend on the program, that are who have friends and relatives who do as well, to reach out to their federal representatives as well as the president, just as the city councils live together. Soon after the budget was proposed, I'd ask that those monies be restored into the budget, because it does impact dramatically the Long Beach budget, and in particular, some of the programs that are dependent upon those funds.
This, Ms. Fernanda, good to see you.
Good to see you. I want to thank those council people who attended Beach Debate's brunch and enjoyed themselves with the community. It was wonderful. And I'd like to thank those people who were very busy and yet found a way to survive. So thank you for that. I have just two comments in terms of the community block grant. Something to consider, I don't know. Could Long Beach apply for the community development on its own, or must we align ourselves with Nassau County? That's number one. Did we ever think about just going for our own grant? That may be more doable, rather than being part of a larger block, something to think about. The other thing is, in terms of the comprehensive plan, there are items in there that certainly are important to get done. Why would that not be reflected in the capital budget? You know, so the infrastructure, and particularly, there are still sewer lines that have to be done, et cetera, and so forth. I would hope that we're looking at the comprehensive plan, pulling from that those things that need to be done to come under our capital budget. And that's just the two comments that I have. Thank you.
Good to see you, and thank you. Thank you, very important comment. Good to have you.
Thank you for coordinating a fabulous event on Sunday, and it was tremendous to see so many people coming out in support of a medical facility in in the barrier island. So again, your work, we are truly, truly valued.
Thank you. We applaud you.
I have to apologize, Ms. Fernanda, you know, I just got back, and I was not in the country during the.
We take donations, it's not a problem. We'll take a donation, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any more comments on this, folks? Okay, it's important to think about this, and again, very important to hear from you. Since I see no more hand, no more hand, I'm going to close. Yes, please come forward. Good, good to see you.
Good evening. There's about $700,000 aside for marketing expenditures. I was just curious as to what we're going to be spending that on.
Oh, have you referred to the presentation from earlier? We did a $700,000 marketing campaign previously. I don't believe that we have $700,000 in marketing for this year. It would be terrific if we did. That was a grant that we got from the state.
Oh, well, maybe we can get a little. So for the record, you didn't say your name.
Yeah, I did, I said Jim Kirkland, but I'll say it again. I'm still the same person.
With the pleasure, thank you. Quick question. Thank you, thank you. Okay, if that is the last question from the public, I'm going to quote the hearing on the side of the wall.
Here for the continuing.
That's right, and we will continue this discussion at our next city council meeting. Do we, do we have the date for that? Okay. On the 16th, very good. So on the 16th, the discussion will continue on the budget. And again, thank you, everyone, to those of you who commented. We're going to move on to our next item.
And on to my new calendar. I had one's resolution authorizing the city manager to enter for a contract for emergency sanitary sewer replacement at the intersection of West Beach Street and Connecticut Avenue for the largest possible bid.
Hey, this resolution is required for the replacement on approximately 200 linear feet of failing sanitary sewer maintenance funding is available under the capital program plan.
Just a question, this 200 linear feet, is this in one area or is it throughout the city?
Yeah, it's at the corner of Connecticut Avenue and West Beach Street.
I see, I see. Okay, any any comments from the council on this sewer system repair and money to be paid? Any comments from the public on this first item on the sewer system? Okay.
Yeah, just kind of if if Mr. Miranda would just come up and just talk a little bit about about the conditions of of the sewer main. What, what, I have a little.
Welcome, Commissioner, how are you? And good to see you. I didn't see you there.
Approximately a week ago, we had called for a sewer backup. Normally, we send a maintenance crew out to check the manholes, and then if the manholes are coupled with sewage, we flush it. And when we went to flush this, we couldn't get into it. Subsequently, we found out that the sewer line itself had actually collapsed, so it just had deteriorated from age. So we were going to replace it from manhole to manhole. We did secure three prices. We were very fortunate. Two of the prices were over $150,000. Allen Industries is working on a project for us in, on Harding Avenue, on Harding Street, rather, and because they were mobilized already, they were able to do it for back half the price. So this emergency repair makes sense. Otherwise, we'd still be out there bypass pumping, which would be running into a lot of overtime, so I think it was really needed, so.
And how will the residents be notified about the work that's going to take place?
They were notified by our people, door to door. As a matter of fact, today, we got a nice email in the public works office from one of the residents telling us what, you know, how great courage the men were that were working for Allen Industries, actually helped one woman carry her groceries into the house so she didn't have to step over the sewer trench. So I think we have good people on it.
Thank you.
And and Mr. Miranda, the you're replacing the sewer lines with what kind of material? Are we mitigating, are we improving?
Yes, the old sewer lines are made of clay, and they come in four-foot sections, so they have a lot of joints that will be replaced with PVC piping, which will come in 18-foot sections, cuts down on the number of joints. They're rubber joints as compared to oakum joints, which is like a material joint in the clay pipe, which allows them to go through and face that danger. So in the long term, we do replace the sewer main, and we'll be with PVC piping.
So what's the estimated life expectancy of this PVC piping?
The true estimate is 75 years.
75, okay, very good, very good. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for being here. Any other questions, folks, from the council? How about the public? Anybody need to get more information? We have a commissioner here. Yes, yes, please, come up, Mr. Kirkland.
Again, Jim Kirkland, just talking to me, talking about sewers. We do it all day, every day. I recently learned, I had had, I subscribe to Braids Risk, and I had called them about a year ago to have them come in and do some checking, and they scoped out everything. They did a wonderful job, but I did speak to some people who had some work done by them, and it turned out that the work that was done was done by unlicensed individuals. I'm just curious as to whether or not, you know, they themselves are licensed now in the city of Long Beach, or they employ people who are.
It's a bit of a topic for this item on the.
Yeah, it is, especially when we were talking about sewers, so I am just up to my mind.
They employ licensed.
Okay, that's really the important thing.
Good, good question, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Kirkland, thank you. Any other questions on this new work that we have done in the West? on this new work that we've had done in the West End, folks, that we're appropriating money for? Okay. Well, with that, folks, we're going to move on to our next item. Thank you, Commissioner.
I have two of the resolutions authorizing the city manager to enter through a contract for streetlight maintenance and repairs with the sole responsible bidder and to transfer funds.
Okay, the city is terminating its contract with the current vendor. Uh, I want to just pause there and just say, uh, a word about that. Um, last year, uh, we, uh, we did a bid and the lowest responsible bidder, as always, and that is general municipal law, um, won the bid. And, um, they haven't been, quite simply put, they have not done a good job. And I think, um, you know, we've all been frustrated, um, with, uh, the speed of fixing streetlights throughout the city. And, uh, it's something that we, we as an administration pride ourselves on being responsive, right? We have a path. We ask people to report when the streetlights are out. We take pride in getting those fixed, uh, quickly. And that just hasn't happened. Um, so we put this out to bid early and, um, surprise surprise, um, the, uh, incumbent did not bid again. And, uh, we, uh, we have a bid here for Wellsback. We had previously done the work, I guess, since 1997. And we are very much looking forward to, uh, to getting this situation, uh, fixed as soon as humanly possible. Uh, we have received many complaints, very justifiable from residents, you know, all over the city, um, that they have not seen that timely action on streetlights that they used to when we were forced to have been run by.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons. I believe that's a, that's an excellent decision we made because I, I frankly was very embarrassed that we couldn't get these lights fixed, uh, in parts of the city, in flickering lights and dangerous darkways. Uh, and it was, it was not good. And I'm so glad that we're moving on with another company. Uh, are there any comments from the council, Mr. Miranda?
I have just a question for, uh, the commissioner. Is it possible to do this work in-house? And if not, why, why can't we do it there?
We could review the course of it in-house, but we'd be purchasing new equipment. We'd have to purchase a small bucket truck and a large bucket truck and probably hire two more electricians. We have actually one very good electrician that works for us, uh, who was a former employee of Wellsback, who, who could probably be in charge. But I think in the long run, I think it would end up costing the city a while.
I see. Just a technical question, Mr. Miranda. Uh, how much of this, uh, these malfunctioning lights are due to what happened to us during sanding? Uh, is, is that related at all to what happened?
Well, indirectly, a lot of the outages are caused by continual work of raising homes. Every time there is a home, they hit an underground line when they do the cuts in the caps of, you know, the gas water sewer. Uh, in addition, there's a lot of wet, wet, uh, wiring that's very old in the ground. Uh, so some of that causes it. And with the high groundwater that exists normally, sometimes very hard to trace where the breaks are. I think one of the issues with the contractor was that they were a little inexperienced with our area. Uh, I think he will find much better, uh, you know, follow-up with Wellsback because they understand when they bid, they understand our system, they understand some of the, uh, the drawbacks of actual working on the system.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the council? How about comments from the public on our lighting, folks? Very important. Mr. Vendo, please come forward. Uh, welcome. Comments on this because it is something that is of tremendous concern to us, of lighting in the streets. Like to make sure that we have a good, a good vendor, a good contractor for us.
John Vendo?
Uh, I think we all agree if the lights aren't getting working, we threw me the cannon. But just a question. Uh, Palace, their contract, which was voted on, on June 21st, 2016, was for $5,100 a month for their service. Uh, this Wellsback contract is for $14,250 a month. That's a 279% increase. Um, what do we get for that 279%? I mean, obviously I hope we get that as service, but that's, that's almost three times the price.
I'll let, uh, the commissioner speak to the, uh, the details, but I think the, the challenge that we see is that the $5,000 price was potentially less than the city that we paid before.
Right. Probably look at a realistic number. I'm not assuming that, but, but I mean, so it, how does, how does the $14,250 compare to what we paid Wellsback before?
The, the actual contract that was bid for Palace, that Palace wanted the $6,000 a month, at that point, Wellsback had bid just a little over $12,000 a month. So, uh, you know, they were definitely understood the system and knows what it's going to take to maintain.
I see. I see. Okay. So the actual work itself is more expensive work. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I know it's all plenty. Palace bid too low to win the contract and really didn't have resources that they were putting on. It was costing them a lot more than the $6,000 a month. So as a result, you end up with a lot of outages and no follow-up at the end of that year, so.
And I mean, because, uh, the, the President, the one President that we're selecting, would you sort of, correct?
That is correct. And, and by the way, his bid was actually $1,000 a month higher because he was the sole bidder. We were allowed to negotiate with him and we were able to negotiate another $1,000 a month down on that, so.
And just, can we get some clarification on, uh, so $14,250 a month is routine maintenance?
Right.
The 287,000, 536 is for repairs and improvements. Can we just give some distinguishing between what's included in routine maintenance versus what's not?
Right. And, and that 276,000, uh, is over an 18-month period also. The contracts are an 18-month period. But that $276,000 is only an estimate of what we think repairs will be needed. Uh, if a light bulb gets hit, knocked over, needs a new light bulb, that would be a, a repair item. If a light goes out through long fumes or a break in the line, that would be on the maintenance side.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vendo. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Okay. Are there any other questions on the lighting, this item number two?
What?
Yes. Please come forward, Miranda.
Hi, Catherine Mondo. My.
Lola, just by the.
Just Catherine Mondo. I just want to just set a follow-up question to Mr. Vendo. So the contract that went from $5,000 to $14,000, is there a scope of work in that contract where you can actually compare and contrast? I understand that the work wasn't, you know, exactly up to par and you're paying quality. But is there a defined scope of work in these contracts that you guys are, you know, fielding? Because I believe that was what Mr. Vendo was asking, is what are we getting for that price? How many, is it on call? Is it the number of lights in Long Beach?
Well, you know, the way they price it is based on the number of lights, but the contract has 22 different items in it and each item is priced out based on the estimated amount of failures that we might have. Absolutely. Yes. This was the same scope that, uh, was bid last time with two additional items that we added this year, uh, for LED lighting and, uh, for receptive repair on the boardwalk.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and are there any other comments on this item number two that are lighting? Extremely important, folks. Okay, we're going to move on to our third item.
And three is a resolution fixing and providing for 2017 season on Ocean Beach Park.
Uh, there's clearly nothing to add here. We plan to complete the summer resolution.
Okay. I guess the question was asked before about, uh, the ticket price and for the beaches and there is no increase. We're happy to say that. Um, are there any comments on the beach park, the last item we have that we're opening? Any comments from the public? Yes. Uh, Mr. Dolan Sevich, how are you, sir? Ma'am, it's good to see you, Joe.
Hi, Mary Dolan Sevich. Um, mentioned, uh, last year that we're going to have a phase two to the restrooms on the beach. And, um, being we're opening the beaches, when is the plan for phase two? And when are we going to have a, um, a solid, uh, lifeguard headquarters? Ours floated away in the west storm. And I'd like to know if that's going to be replaced? The trailers, I don't think, um, are adequate for cancelling the lifeguard headquarters and the medical EMTs that come out of there. And I just wanted to know if that's in the plan of phase two?
I just speak to the, uh, the first issue I need to be able to, the, uh, the British Public Works, uh, can handle anything that, uh, that I leave out, which is simply, uh, bathrooms, uh, have been, uh, subject of, uh, work with FEMA to get the, uh, the necessary funding. Um, and, uh, when we get the, uh, the funding from FEMA, we'll be able to move forward, um, with, uh, additional bathrooms, uh, to, uh, to put permanent bathrooms on the beach where we all want to sail.
Okay. Because, um, this also, you know, we do the movie nights and those, uh, trailers get backed up. I mean, Public Works, you know, does the very best they can. Like they, you know, they're limited to what they can do. And, you know, Tim Bullard years ago wasn't as proud as, as it is now. You have people coming from all over. So, um, if we could get those done, that would be great. And, um, again, the lifeguard headquarters, uh, I don't know why, you know, we haven't looked into replacing that, but I think it's very important. There's three months it's there.
I wouldn't assume that we haven't looked into replacing that, into replacing that, by the way.
Well, I never heard anything mentioned, so, um, we already mentioned that it's going to be good. All of you, Bill.
I think that's part of the ongoing recovery work that we, that we plan to do. I'll, I'll let the commissioner, uh, works, uh, of course, speak.
Interesting time on the question because this morning we met with the, uh, York State DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, the lifeguard station, we're waiting until the doom project is done. But as part of that doom project, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers will be setting, uh, uh, piles for us to rebuild the lifeguard stand on Edwards Avenue. Because once the doom is built, we, we have a very tough time getting permission to, to land the lifeguard station. Uh, so we will be, uh, we will be filing a, uh, application to the DEC to allow the piles to be put in by the Army Corps of Engineers. And that will be at the foot of Edwards Avenue. There'll be a one-story structure with the roof, uh, you know, roof structure on it so that they can see the temple into the beach like they used to. It won't be any higher than the lifeguard stand was before because the lifeguard headquarters was built up from the beach. So, uh, so that will be happening in the next year. But until the doom is built and those piles are in, it really doesn't make sense for us to move forward with that.
Let, let me get it straight, Mr. Miranda. You're saying that we are requiring at least approvals from DEC before, uh, we can even announce to the public that this is in works?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. That's why you haven't heard much because we don't have the approval yet. So, and it's wishless.
Right. But we did make a lot of progress today with both the DEC and the Army Corps, so.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Thank you, Mr. Sevich.
All right. One more question. Um, would that, would that be, um, built up so that, you know, like elevated? I've been to beaches in Galveston, San Diego, Los Angeles.
Well, well, it would have to be elevated and all of the firm level, like just like the boardwalk was and the doom is going to be when walk holds. Uh, they have to be out of the flood elevation.
Thank you again. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions, folks, on this last item that we're discussing? Mr. Myers, how are you? Good to see you. Good to see you. I'm actually getting new glasses, so I'll be able to see people from where I'm at. So it's, I actually have them ready and I had to pick them up. Good to see you, Mr. Myers.
You're welcome, David.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Myers, Long Beach. The question is, um, how will the Army Corps Engineering Project affect the beach park season? Do we have any potential loss of housing? How does this affect the park season? The question is.
We just had a whole other reason to get it to it. Um, the simple answer is our beaches will be open. Uh, I'll let the commissioner, Public Works, speak, uh, you know, a little bit more.
Mr. Miranda, we might as well have a chair up here.
I would just remind you though that this resolution. I would just remind everybody that this resolution provides, uh, simply for the opening of beach park beginning on the 1st of August.
The each, on each, uh, end of the, of the beach, on the west end and the east end, there'll be approximately 500 feet of the beach that will not be accessible while they work on a particular groin. Uh, other than that, the other, you know, part of the 3.2 miles of the beach will be open. Uh, and, uh, any place that was, you know, fencing by the Army Corps put up or by the contractor, there'll be access to the beach from those areas where people are not working.
And to be clear, all the fencing in the middle of town is going to be taken down.
Right. As, as a matter of fact, the contractor, uh, that was scheduled to begin about May 15th. This contractor so far had a schedule on the first two groins that, uh, they will finish the, uh, one groin at, uh, Edwards and Riverside will be finished by the end of this week. And next week, that fencing will start coming down and they'll be working on the groin by York Avenue and by next week.
As far as, um, the beach is concerned, we, we also know that in past budgets, it's been part of the revenue stream that we get in. And then we've had that potential impact to the revenue stream and its development this, this, this year.
We make conservative estimates here based on, uh, any potential, uh, losses. But however, I would emphasize, and I think it repeats all of us, uh, because those who pay at the beach, uh, prevent us from paying more taxes, uh, to remind everybody that our beaches are open this year.
It's not my job, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions on the beach park opening? Again, um, as Mr. Timmons was saying, quickly, this, uh, resolution involves the opening of the beach park period, um, this summer, for the summer. Okay. I think that pretty much covers it. I don't see any other hands. Move on.
Okay. I enforce the head, but I have his consent. I endorse the resolution authorizing publication for hearing of budgets authorizing various capital projects in and for the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, state, the estimated total cost payroll of $14,973. Appropriating said, excuse me, appropriating said amount therefore, including the expenditure of $5,525,950 expected to be received in state or federal aid, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $14,973 bonds of said city to finance appropriation. This item is a publication only. Hearing will be held Tuesday, May 16th at 7:00 p.m.
Also voting?
I have one of the resolutions authorizing the city manager to enter through a contract for emergency sanitary sewer replacement at the intersection of West Beach Street and Connecticut Avenue from the lowest responsible bidder.
Would you just move the motion to this item?
I will.
This item?
I will.
All right, Councilor Dyer?
Yes.
Senator Vandal?
Yes.
Senator Moore?
Yes.
President Obama?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
I have two of the resolutions authorizing the city manager to enter through a contract for streetlight maintenance and repair with the sole responsible bidder and to transfer funds.
Would you just move the motion to this item?
I'll introduce that.
This item?
I'll say.
Lloyd, Councilor Dyer?
Just in voting, I want to thank the administration and court council for having the foresight to take a step to improve the contract that's in the, I mean, there because I know this is an important mission to the residents and the state, to the city. So I vote yes.
Senator Vandal?
Yes.
Senator Moore?
Yes.
President Obama?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
Three is resolution fixing and providing for 2017 season of the Ocean Beach Park.
Would you just move the motion to this item?
I will.
This item?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilor Dyer?
Yes.
Senator Vandal?
Yes.
Yes.
President Lawrence? Yes. Yes.
And finally, I endorse a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of orders authorizing various capital projects in and for the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, New York, state, the estimated total cost payroll of $14,973,000. Appropriating said amount therefore, including the expenditure of $5,525,950 expected to be received in state or federal aid or the residential, so not to exceed $14,973,000 bonds of said city to finance appropriation.
Would you just move the motion to this item? This item?
I'll second that.
Lloyd, Councilor Dyer?
Yes.
Senator Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
Yes. City manager's multi-personal orders filed by the city clerk, no way for support.
I will.
This side?
I'll say.
Lloyd, House of Representatives.
Yes.
House of Representatives, Van Del.
Yes.
House of Representatives, Moore.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
President Flores. Yes.
Well, that brings our meeting to an end in the Senate Council portion. Now entering the middle of the fair portion of our meeting, and again, only those folks that were able to sign up for this can, can get up to speak. And again, but just as a reminder, we have a three-minute limit. We will remind you that your three minutes are up and you'll please wrap it up at that point. And again, I ask everyone to please to keep to the kind of the quorum that we are expecting from the public at a governmental meeting like this. And again, that includes yelling out, it includes cross talking, we will not commit moving of any kind. These are things that we do not see as part of the quorum for our city council meeting. And with that, we have our first person, Mr. Michael Gray. Welcome, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, City Council. I have a question about my army background, lost my son and my dog. Mr. Schmier, I've tried to talk to you for four and a half years. Took my job away when you said it was no money, gave yourself a raise, then had a heart attack. And I'm tired of people who went back to raccoons and you too busy to talk to me, give yourself a raise, I have a college degree, army man, making embarrassing in front of the community and my family, I can't go home and see my son no more and I lost my dog. So why are you too busy and why don't I have my job back? As a government, serving in the military, I have priority to adopt and afford to build. You didn't acknowledge my duty to 14. Ran around here like you some goddess and I'm suffering. Mr. Torres, I talked to you about this. How come everybody recovered since standing except for Mr. Gray? See this? I lived in a bed and house for four and a half years, had a heart attack. I did this at work. And this man is too busy to talk to me? Somebody please answer that, because I'm tired of suffering. I served the country. You're young enough to be my son. You don't even know me, I came to your office and cried when you laid me off. And look, you go home and see him like your son. I don't see him no more. I'm fed up, I'm not here to complain, why did you do this to me, man? Why did you destroy my life when you don't even know me? And you too busy to talk to me? Yes.
I know you dealt with my office before.
Yes.
Speaking of my office, I can't hear you.
Come on.
Sure, and you know, you dealt with my office before, remember?
Yeah, I dealt with mine.
I know, but you dealt with my office after you were laid off because of your threat to infect.
I didn't threaten nobody, let's just have it straight.
Mr. Gray, let him talk, Mr. Gray, that's part of the deal here, you gotta let him talk.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, you were, you were ultimately found guilty of threatening a serious, of the city manager with serious violation, as well as your own duty, and it was an official decision sustaining your life. And that's why you have to be brought back.
Okay, now let me tell you something. Now, this commissioner said you hurt me shampoo shoot that nigga. Now, if he was afraid of me, how I run this office with just other people I work with and I cry, only gay day talk and Rudy talk, so the information is wrong and it will come to light. I never threatened anybody, I came to City Hall every day crying for 30 days, he got intimidated, he told me go talk to the union guy and I did that. So don't tell me after the fact I did nothing? 12 years on my job start for $7 and everybody recovers since standing and he laid me off because it wasn't no money? How he give himself a raise? He's the highest paid in Nassau County. So I have why I have a right to be mad at after the fact, after the fact, after everybody didn't get back standing, then it started to affect me. Because my son has asthma, I pay for his medicine, my momma should, I pay for her medicine. I even had a heart attack, I messed my letter up working for the city of Long Beach to listen big side hit. I went through the chain of command. What am I supposed to do? I was under y'all hook being prison for five years and me living in a dead young abandoned house. What around here, I got a house with weed access, my brother's professional athlete, then get my whole rug and look like a bum in front of my mother when she sick. And it took five years for me to come up here and finally talk to you, I said, you Mr. Torres, you made promises, promises, promises. I even talk to you Mr. Schmier, if you was afraid of me and I seen you and your wife with my nice dog, you wouldn't have died away from me. You was afraid now with enough energy to come in your office and order to give a fire and I stopped right up there crying.
Mr. Thomas is fired.
Okay, thank you. If we have a question, like...
Oh, my friend, thank you.
Bullshit.
Sir, we don't know each other, but I wish you well.
Yeah, sure. Baby Donald Trump, I wish you well too. Hope you get a peach. Run for Nassau County Executive, I'll be out there, don't vote for him. You're evil, man. Came here and destroyed my wife.
Okay, our next person that we have listed for speaking is Mr. Stifman. Shina, Shina?
I'll pass, I'll pass in a second.
Well, it's good to see you, though.
Good too.
Yeah, boy, haven't seen you in a while. Okay, what about Bill Dodge? Is Bill Dodge here? Bill, thank you for staying with us. Welcome. We just need you to state your name at the mic for the record.
Sure. Bill Dodge, president of the Long Beach COA. I've gotten emails I sent here, but they really don't come back, so you probably, probably not definitely would. I'm here to give you a little timeline, just to refresh everybody of where we're at. In 1985, I was hired here by the city. By my calculations, Mr. Shneer, when you were eight, you might have come down here, you might have realized that this town was a very different place back in 1985. Also, the police department worked really hard to change that. In 2012, you were hired as city manager. In May of 2012, a lawsuit was filed naming some defendants, including you, Mr. City Manager, Council President Flores, Mr. Mandel, Commissioner, Police Commissioner Tagg, by some members of what is now Mike Carron Union, former members of Mike Carron Union, alleging a range of retaliatory conduct or political affiliation. The city retained a very respected large law firm in attempt to defend against those lawsuit claims. You all know that, but we're just rehashing. In June of 2012, Mr. Shneer, you granted a contract with Police Commissioner Tagg. A PBA retroactive award terms were applied with Commissioner Tagg only, to no other lieutenant in the police department at that time. In 2014, Mr. City Manager Shneer, you asked the US attorney to probe that lawsuit against the city. In 2015, in March, the Nassau Supreme Court found a default judgment in the super block case. Default judgment usually means missed date, right? You didn't show up when you're supposed to show up. Then in December of 2015, the city council, at a meeting, voted to pay default judgment in excess of $15 million. However, also in December of 15, the city entered into secret agreements for cash payments with the plaintiffs in that lawsuit after spending over $444,000 in legal expenses. Also in December of 2015, the city cut a check to their lawsuit attorneys in that one single month for over $116,000. Moving forward to March of 2016, defendant of the lawsuit, Mr. Torres, announced that after almost 30 days of hard negotiation, he was able to create a successor contract to you, Mr. Shneer. A variety of residents got up there and spoke impassioned about how you could not plan for your family's future without a contract, and how important it was that you had that so you could plan for your future. They were impassioned and I wholly agree with you. You certainly deserve to have that contract to plan for your family's future. However, as of today, the members of Long Beach COA are without a contract for 3,227 days. Surely a much larger number than the 30-something days that you serve without a contract. In July of 2016, the city made a FOIL request for information regarding the insurance costs connection with that lawsuit. It wasn't answered. It's a, I'll finish, I'm finishing out just like everybody else did. In September of 2016, we made another FOIL request for that request, information. It wasn't answered. And in February of 2017, we made yet another request for that information and it wasn't answered. Oddly, the only three people that haven't answered emails on this board up here from my union are the same three members that were named in the lawsuit. Those members are not members of my union anymore. Every time, we implore you to stop whatever nonsense is going on, open your eyes, and come back without the answers. I expect that by sending emails in the future that I will get answers, and for the council members that have taken the time to answer, I greatly appreciate your output. Your input is...
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
My name's John, John Gray.
I'm sorry, guys.
You'll see it then. Thank you.
The fact that, so this is clearly an example, there's never been a default judgment in the super block case. That was the, that was the result of, of course, the termination that the city undervalued the 13 different parcels of the super block that previously existed before they were settled or combined. And subsequently, the city was, was forced to pay that valuation back to the property owners. That's on the default judgment. Let's see, secondly, it talks about $444,000 worth of legal fees, but you know from your FOIL request, the city was reimbursed in the amount of approximately $185,000 for those fees. Hang on, you said your fees, I'm gonna say mine now. And as far as the secret agreement goes, FOIL, I told you this better than anyone through your FOIL requests, that those agreements aren't secret at all. You obtain them through fraud. They're perfectly public and accessible to all. And so I can't begin to understand why the people call that a secret agreement, when in fact, I'm putting in paragraph seven with these settlement agreements. It specifically binds the plaintiff in confidentiality provisions, not the city. It was unilateral confidentiality. The city is not bound by any confidentiality rule within these seven settlement agreements. But that being said, since transparency seems to be the overarching theme now, maybe COA in their negotiations, maybe we should have public negotiations and you should set forth your demands in public, so the public can see what you're asking for.
Maybe we should.
Maybe we should.
What we've said is a set of facts, and you did pay $444,000.
And we're reimbursed.
You are reimbursed, and we will be addressing these issues one by one.
I will.
In three minutes, it can't be done. So what we did, we started dialogue, and we will continue the dialogue. We have continued the dialogue with some members of the council. I would like to continue the dialogue with all members of the council. I think it's disrespectful when we send emails, when we send information and we get nothing back, it's not helpful.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Agostini. Okay, we will now hear from Ms. Vicki, Ms. Vining, Judy Vining. She's still here?
I'm here.
Whoa, my very good. How could I miss this Vining? Good to see you.
I've changed.
It's, it's me, it's not you. It's good to see you.
Okay, Judy Vining, portentance problem of Long Beach. It'll be schizophrenic, I won't talk, not as director of Long Beach, represent. But just as a resident, I wanted to address, we all know the problem with the parking issue. And I wondered if you give any consideration to kind of test this summer or for the beach seasons, maybe making just the north side of Broadway, residents only, from, say, Long Beach to Maple, because you have a densely populated area there and with Cirque du Soleil beach and a hotel, it's not much fun. Anyway, so it may not work at all, and I understand that resident only doesn't need residential to that area, but still, I give it a fighting chance. The other thing on that end is that, have you considered, or maybe haven't, that when the groin is being built on Cranton, and so that beach will be closed, but next to it is what it's always been, Permanent Cirque du Soleil beach on Lincoln, so you've got lots of high rises and you're gonna have at least three blocks worth where there's no swimming that you consider for that period of time that was being worked on in Cranton, of perhaps moving the Permanent Cirque du Soleil beach to that three week period so that there's some access in that area? Okay. Switching hats.
Just, that won't be done in the summer, though.
Yes, well, it's supposed to be in the summer, according to the schedule I thought.
Those are excellent suggestions.
Okay. Switching hats. Okay, I have a letter for each of you because you went on the website. I don't know if the podcast has yet requested to have VIP tent for alcohol, but as an organization, Long Beach aware, once more, I'm ready to stay with this. But as first say as an organization, we both welcome and support diversity and are excited to have a new Pride of the Beach event in our hometown. However, we have read on the website that they intend to propose to be allowed to have a VIP tent, which will allow for sale and/or consumption of alcohol beverages. Historically, Long Beach aware, and as a past, such is the name of the coach for venom range drinking, has opposed the granting of temporary permits for sale or consumption of alcohol. The reasons for this are evident. There are possibly 90 establishments, given 105, which have, whether it count, you believe, within a 345 square mile city where alcohol can be purchased or consumed, including a bar and restaurant adjacent to the ocean beach park. Our youth are but boarded with subtle and not so self messages, that the only way to enjoy anything is with an alcohol beverage in hand. Special use purpose only reports this message. We are opposed that the city of Long Beach grant you a permit for the sale or consumption of alcohol on the beach during the Pride of the Best. We urge the city council to direct the city manager, corporation council, and city clerk to deny any such proposal. Private security and no way lessens the exposure of our youth to the messages of offense to them. It does not lessen the safety, liability, and foggy life issues that will arise after people leave the VIP tent and either swim our ocean or walk the boardwalk or through our neighborhoods, or drive away to another part of the festival still under the influence. The Ocean Beach Park is protected as an alcohol-free environment by the city code of ordinances. We really would urge the city to speak with the sponsors of the festival and ask them to allow the anticipated, whether it's 20,000 or 30,000 guests, to enjoy our beautiful beach and honor our community by respecting our laws rather than asking for them to be satisfied. Thank you.
Ms. Vining, thank you so much. You have tremendous respect for your mission and what you represent.
And then, we don't know, I mean, is it for sale? Is it, those are questions you might want to ask.
Yes.
Is it for sale, is there a trade limit, one hour?
We're, we're in the process of negotiating every item that, that, all of these things that you've discussed, and, and thank you, thank you, Ms. Vining. We appreciate that very much. We have next, Ms. Mary Bolishevich.
I'm the deputy head of the Long Beach Bay Canals Civic Association. We had our fifth annual Canals cleanup this past Saturday, and we had members from the Center Point Church, flesh, staff writer, council members, students from the high school and middle school, who went up and down the streets along with the canals, and we filled up two big giant trucks with all the trash that we picked up. I'd like to especially thank Daniel Ryan and Ryan Donnelly from Beach Maintenance for all their help. I'd like to also thank Mrs. Miss Moore for sharing our event with the Center Point Church. Thank you. At our past meeting last Thursday, the Canals Civic Association, there was a big discussion on the speeding and the stop signs. I'm up here, I know all the time doing it, I know what you're gonna say to me, I know what the commissioner's gonna say. At this time of the year, yes, it is the residents. But I think if we could have some unexpected police presence, we had officer line one day, and I think in the time it took me to lock my door, he got six people going through stop signs. And it's becoming a big problem. More others, we are forming a committee to give this out to our members. Kevin O'Leary will pen that up. But we've gotten many emails from people and... But we've gotten many emails from people complaining about the, um, canal area, the stop signs, and people going through them, and, um, we decided to form this committee, and hopefully, the people that send us the emails and, and the texts will show up to form this committee. Once it's formed, Mr. Riley will let our commissioner know, and we'd like to work because I just, it's just unbearable. I, I don't have young children, but this is mothers on cell phones, they're texting, with children in the car, and I know they get mad at us. I think they would get one from commissioner after they did do a stop, and one woman just came in, and he was like a crazy person. Um, but something has to be done, and we're willing to take the heat if it's gonna save a child's life or a bad car accident. So, uh, we will let you know when we form this committee. Our next meeting is May eighteen, and, uh, we would like to work with the, with the police department to get more of a presence. Uh, the hours that seem to be the worst are the morning hours when the kids are going to school, and the evening hours when people are coming home from work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volcevich. You know, I sympathize very much with what you're saying, uh, not just the children and the adults, but also people walking their dogs. It's, uh, people, you're right, people are not stopping to even run over your dog. It almost happened to my son, so, so I, I sympathize and I agree totally with you.
Professor Torres, I just wanted to, once again, just applaud the efforts of the Canals Civic, along with Surf Rider, for, uh, not only an educational program, but also for a very critical program. Uh, even while I was standing there during that period of time, there were so several cars racing, and we were holding out to people, telling them to slow down. So this is, this really is an issue that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. And then, secondly, I'm hoping that there's something that we can do, I guess, as council members, as, as, as the city, to really talk to people about our respecting and protecting our bay. Uh, there were two truckloads that I witnessed during that period of time, and once again, uh, we thank the efforts of the CTA to, to assist us, but they, uh, they were able to put, uh, two truckloads of, of just stuff, of all kinds of stuff, and, uh, the kind of things that people throw into the bay, uh, it's alarming, but it's also disturbing. And so I'm hoping that we can all partner, uh, to get this information out to people about protecting, uh, our bay, but we thank the Surf Rider Association as long as, as well as the Canals Civic for really standing up and really moving forward with this and being proactive.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Lieutenant Chinasky, if you wanted to comment on the station?
Yes, as officer, yes, absolutely.
No, not as an officer, as a, you're an official.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, we, it has to be related to the issue of the, uh, the stop signs and that sort of, you can't just come back and... I'm requesting to restate my initial request that I had, as long as I speak, I couldn't help. Yeah? Thank you, sir. Lieutenant Chinasky, Vice President of the Community Officers Association, to follow up on the discussion that President Dodge was having. Part of the issue with the term secrecy was, it is our understanding and reading of the city charter that corporation councils permitted to settle matters $25,000 or less. The FOIL request we received, the six plaintiffs in this lawsuit received benefits much higher than $25,000. So to the extent that there's, uh, the appearance of secrecy and lack of transparency, one of the questions that we had was, why wasn't this voted on by the council?
Your question is answered by the very document, Detective Lieutenant, that you posted online. The city never expended more than $25,000 on any of these settlements. Any money's over $25,000 on those six settlements, to the extent money was paid, over $25,000 were paid directly to the plaintiffs by our insurance carrier, not the city. That was a carrier's choice, that was not the city's payment. Do we, do you understand what I'm...
I do understand what you're saying.
And also, I should, I should, I should hasten to add that all amounts under $25,000 and under, except on one of those cases, was fully reimbursed by the carrier. In total, to resolve these six cases, the city paid a grand total of $25,000, or approximately $4,000 per case. Beat that deal anywhere in federal court, you won't.
Okay, but the question stands. The city charter does not specify the money came, got reimbursed by the insurance carrier?
But the settlement agreement does. The settlement agreement says...
No, the charter does not say that. The charter says that U.S. Corporation Council has the ability to settle any matter $25,000 or less. It doesn't say where the money is coming from, and it could be argued that the spirit and intent of that document is to make it transparent that there was conduct in the city such that it required a payment over $25,000. Could it not?
No, it couldn't. You're here, I believe you're incorrect.
Okay, but that is, to the extent that we're talking about transparency, this was not voted on by the general council, and it was far more than $25,000.
And lawyers have to pay under the charter. Your legal analysis is incorrect.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer.
I know.
And I identify myself as the vice president of this man.
I see that. Thank you.
Lieutenant, thank you, and again, we appreciate everyone and their comments, uh, and we're gonna go on to our next person. Uh, Ms. Preston. Liz, good, good, good that you stayed with us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Liz Preston, thirty-seven Wyoming Avenue. I'm here this evening to speak as resident and not as any representative of any organization. I'm talking today about the ADA accessibility portion of the, of the ocean parks each this year between seventeen. On the city's website, hashtag mapgate, um, the same four beaches, Virginia, Neptune, and Bird, and Long Beach Road, will be having the maps put out. My question, I guess, to the commissioner is, do we have these maps? Because last year, Jim had stated that a number of the ones destroyed, and are we ready to go with the long beaches? Because it's a pilot program, when is the pilot finished? Because this is just a case from last year. So, but just trying to move on real quickly, because I know my timer's up. My other question as a resident is, from the comprehensive plan, if the O E M is going to be on this floor, why is the comprehensive plan, given further to the document, going to repurpose this building? Or am I incorrect? Um, my other, uh, question is on access parking. I, New York and Neptune was taken away by A, which I understand needs to be done. After talking to and bringing this to the attention of the Army Corps of Engineers, something was obviously done because the signs were indicating the parking was removed. You may or may not be aware, but there's practices under access parking, I'm going to assume, there actually are now being followed by the city. But when you're moving, you must place a sign, and when you're replacing the sign, then please request, actually, it's not a request, it's actually MCF, it's for test practice floor, that you paint with a hashtag with the appropriate station flyer. In conclusion, uh, looking for a rental, I could really and appreciate any leads anyone has. Thank you.
We thank you, Ms. Preston. Sure.
We have, can we hear any respect to the mats?
The mats, we have the movie mats.
Do you have any information on that? Someone speak to that?
It could be, you know, I've, I've checked.
I don't really have any information on the movie mats. I know there was some issues with them last year, being damaged, and I actually had the manufacturer, the movie mats meeting with the, the beach maintenance superintendent, but I haven't really gotten a chance to follow up on it yet, so I really don't have any new information tonight on it.
Yeah, Commissioner, it was my understanding that if these mats are run over by a truck, um, the vehicles we have, they become damaged, become actually a hazard, and they have to be removed.
Yeah, well, that was my understanding too, and that's why I put the manufacturer in touch with the beach superintendent to see, because I felt there was a way to fix that, uh, but I have not heard, well, the manufacturer mention that there is, so I'm gonna have the manufacturer meet as soon as I have any other information on it, I'll pass it along, but at this time, I can't tell you something I don't know.
Okay.
I assume you, you're gonna do a presentation in the next council meeting for the capital plan. If you could have something for the public by that painting, that'd be great. Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, very important, very important.
The O E M is being planned from the sixth floor?
Yes, the O E M is being planned from the sixth floor, um, and, uh, over the long term, uh, the hope is that, uh, this building will ultimately be replaced, but I, I think from a realistic perspective, we're talking about quite a few years away.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Preston.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, we have Ms. Mindy Delft, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, I'm sorry, I'm not, um, I hope you'll, uh, forgive me.
It's okay.
Have you seen how we did it first, pronounce it properly?
It sounds like the birds.
I see Delft.
Involved.
Yes, yes, a very pretty name.
Thank you, thank you. So can I just speak on what, um, Ms. Preston just said before I say what I have to say? So last year, I talked about the movie mats as well, and the commissioner, um, just talked about the fact that there was a problem with the, with the trucks, but there's beaches all over the world that have these movie mats, so there's gotta be something to be done. Long Beach, I mean, I just, I, I just hear, when I hear him say that, I just hear, that's just, that's just a, it's just a problem, it's a problem that can be dealt with. That's all I have to say about it, okay? Long Beach needs to have really every beach, not just a couple beaches. Okay? So my question is, I'm just curious, um, I know that the beach passes are going on sale this week, which is wonderful, I'm just wondering if there's anything to be done about people that need accessibility, because I've noticed that there's a long line for everybody that has the beach passes, but I've noticed that there's people standing out there with their handicap placards, and they're also standing there in that long line, and with medical problems and everything out in the heat, there really should be something for somebody that has a disability, there needs to be something else. I just think you guys should really think about that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
It's a very good suggestion.
It has to be part to look at that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for bringing this up, because it's really about just providing access for, for everybody. And, um, I hope that we can move forward with that, and not only that, um, I think it's so important that, um, that residents engage in the process and to also partner with the city, because these are ideas, but they're also things that we should just, we should just do. And so I'm hoping that, uh, we can move forward with that, and we can expedite this process, that this is really critical, providing access for everyone. Uh, that's, that's a federal mandate, and even so much more, we need to make it a priority for our city.
I agree. Thank you.
That's very well said, Ms. Moore. You know, it's ama, it's amazing, because I took my father around in a wheelchair in Puerto Rico, and everywhere we entered, we were pushed to the front of the line, because, you know, they saw that he was a senior and couldn't, couldn't take it very much longer on the line. So I certainly appreciate any feedback. We have, uh, Mr. Brian Bergman. Brian, uh, you still with us? Wonderful. Mr. Bergman, thank you again, all of you for staying with us this late. It's always a good day when we can get folks to participate in, in the process of city council. Welcome, Mr. Bergman.
Thank you. So later, we can talk about next meeting. Um, Brian Bergman, Chairman of the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce. I have a few comments, questions, uh, for the council, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Um, my question regarding the protest, uh, June nineteenth and eleventh, and, uh, some concerns that, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce has, uh, with the city's preparedness and such communication with, uh, with the merchants. Uh, so, so, four, five brief questions, and, uh, I'd love to hear your response, or communicate later with the council and the city. Uh, is, uh, is the city involved with promoting any activities or events, uh, to benefit the merchants east and west of the center of town? Uh, this was brought up in our last meeting we had at April twenty-fourth across the street, uh, the, the crux of the events even being the center of town. Many of our merchants, the peripheral, peripheral have had some concerns that they'd be left out, and, uh, uh, any, any comments on that would be welcome. Should I know all the questions, or anyone who wanted to?
Please do.
Uh, the, is the, is the city going to communicate directly with the merchants, either by the city's email list or through printed material? Um, a lot of merchants have told us that they're still unaware really what's going on. Uh, the fact that the organizers have a website is very nice, a lot of people don't know that that exists, uh, don't understand what the city, uh, expects of them, or what they should expect. Um, the other question is, what measures are being taken by the city to ensure, uh, that special parking areas are being used? If we get some of the crowds estimated on the Saturday or Sunday, uh, and they don't all come by train, the center of town will be crazy, to put it bluntly. And I know that there are special parking areas at the schools and, uh, the east and west end, I'm wondering what the city, uh, is doing to, uh, promote that, and to, uh, to have the people coming out, come out of town, to park in those areas first rather than necessarily parking in the center of town. And, uh, final question is, oh, I'm sorry, and, uh, will it be, uh, will you be encouraging shuttles, or will there be any communication to encourage, uh, the shuttle and the private, public, uh, transportation, sorry? And finally, the, there were questions about the, uh, the bridge opening, and I know that the city does not control that, that, in other words, it's a county issue, but, uh, are there any details forthcoming as to, is like, is a regatta or a flotilla of some sort of boats gonna be parading through the bay? Is there a schedule when the bridge might be opened? Are you saying the bridge could be open? Is, is it true, and how long? I would take the business to want to know about that. I'm sure we made it residents do as well. Thank you very much.
I would just mention that I know there's a, a queue that speaks to the, I think, the last, uh, three issues, though, I know our police commissioner's here, that he can speak with, I expect regarding the first two. Uh, those are terrific things, and I, I would imagine they're growing off. Uh, I'm sure you're in regular contact with Patty Bourne, and, uh, I would hope and expect that you guys would work together on that as well, and we know we're always having a party with the chamber, and, uh, I think we would expect that that would be the case.
Can you just give a, uh, just, can you just clarify for a moment, because based on what you just said, my understanding is that the, the merchants are really asking for direct communication? So in other words, this communication's not really happening on a consistent basis, and there are a lot of merchants that are still, uh, unsure with respect to, to us moving forward? Is that correct?
Not necessarily moving forward, but just what's happening or moving forward. Uh, I think many people are figuring out that it's definitely happening, but they are concerned as to what's, uh, I know the pride fest is doing their own thing, but what's, what's happening to involve the merchants? Uh, the chambers, communication has been, we've had dialogue with the, with the organizers, but, uh, maybe somewhat later than would have been, uh, desired.
So, is, uh, is there a process with respect to getting the, the residents more involved, um, so that they will have the information that they need to move forward?
I would say monthly city chamber liaison meetings, I would expect that, that these issues would be handled with a process.
Right, but outside of the monthly meeting, how are we getting information, being that at this point, um, we're at May second, and the festival is, is, is here, and so it's, it's helpful for the residents, the merchants to really make the preparations and necessary preparations as, um, events continue to take place, and also as, uh, issues change? So how, how are we getting that information out to, to the merchants? Through this process?
Uh, this is the first that we're hearing that they're not getting information, so I'm sure that we will take additional efforts, um, as needed to, to make that happen. And, uh, Brian, you know, our door's always open, and obviously Patty's, uh, is there to speak here every single day.
Thank you.
Brian, I can just, just to respond to your initial question, and I just want to thank you for coming and where you've done these concerns, uh, so that the council can work to address them. Uh, but regarding the first issue as to whether Pride is willing to have some of the events not just in the center of town, it's my understanding that they've been in touch with some of the, um, merchants, on, in particular, at least with my discussions with them on the west end, to kind of include that, and some of the taste of Long Beach, uh, programs for the evening. to kind of include that in some of the taste of Long Beach programs for the evening. But if that's not happening, I think if there is a willingness to do that, if that's, if there are merchants who are willing to, to do that sort of thing.
I know that my time is up. I said, a lot of it done later than would have been desired by many parties, although we, of course, wish for a successful event. My question would work towards if the city or the chambers person would work towards what the city is doing to communicate, or is it just leaving it up to them to go to a door and so forth? Or I know the city keeps a list of their businesses and so forth. I know the city was promoting a day or keeping a lot of communication.
Yeah, they have their representatives doing that. And we would, we'll be happy to encourage them to do more. And we're happy to speak to you and make sure that, you know, everybody can believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for staying this late with us and to a very good city council meeting. And I, I wish everyone well and get home safely all of you. Good night.